And I'll call me to order at six. And I'll make a call. So I'm here. Stephen, are you here?
Yep.
Okay.
Here.
Okay. Olivia?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
And Jimmy?
Here.
And Brian, what is your last name, honey?
Yes, D.I.D.A.T.
Okay. Brian is here for our town attorney. Okay. Let's begin for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Oh.
Uh, has anyone reviewed the minutes? If so, I would entertain a motion.
I did.
Okay.
And I make the motion to get it through.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And the approval of the claims and pay notes. I will entertain a motion and someone has looked at all those. Some of which we've been discussing.
I was gonna say, can we approve those with the questions that we have? In regards to the electric?
Yes, we can, and you can put that in your motion if you want to.
Uh, what day is it, Lieutenant?
Approving the claims.
I came here.
Oh, okay. Uh, the, the approval of the claims, and we've been looking at some of those. And some of the electric claims seem rather high. And so, we can put a caveat in there into the motion, that's fine.
I'll make the motion to approve the claims with a caveat, we need to possibly look into the electric bills.
Okay, on Hancock?
On Hancock, not only Hancock, uh, the town hall, I do believe.
Okay.
I, I don't think we need to look into the yeah, this Hancock and the town hall.
Okay.
Did you get that motion?
Got it?
Yes, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, any new business? We don't have any new business on the agenda. No one offers any other new business? All right. Uh, Marco must be hearing the citizen comments.
Well, this was about the street up there. That's okay.
What street?
Short Street, right there where we that ditch was washed out some here.
Well, okay, well, we'll get to, we'll get to that then in, uh, in your comments. And we'll have to comment on it at that time perhaps. So, there's no new business then to bring before, um, the council, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and the only old business we had on the agenda was the mowing contract, and Brian, I don't know if Greg kind of caught you up on that?
On this? Is this looking?
Yes.
Okay, is this all you all that have on? This is the contract, okay.
As a proven room.
Okay. Um, and so, my understanding is that you're just, you guys are not interested in continuing
That's correct.
meeting them, okay, um, and so what exactly are you all looking for? Just, you wanna make sure that he's, they're not signed up to work again next year?
We want to make sure we're legally get out of that contract.
Yeah, okay, I, there's, I told Greg a little bit about this, and this you can probably tell isn't too
Right.
Oh, yeah, um, there shouldn't be too much of a problem, um. I think if you just communicate, send something to them pretty clearly that says, makes it, makes it clear in the documents that, hey, we're not gonna be, just to make sure we are not gonna be bringing you all back in to work for us in the spring or whatever starts, so.
As I recall, that only calls for seven days notice, is that?
Seven day written notice.
Seven day written notice, I thought that's what it called for.
Yeah.
It's a convenience.
And it says, well, it says, it says on here, this is for twenty twenty-four mowing, it's, so I think you guys, if you just send, you communicate to them and kind of have it documented that you don't plan on continuing, I, you don't have too much to worry about with it.
Well, do I hear a motion to the effect that we will, um, move toward the cancellation of the mowing contract for next season? Next season is what we wanted to do, right, Jay?
Yeah.
Then it should have been twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Right.
Because it was a three-year, four-year thing to start it up. So, but yeah, okay. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to cancel the contract.
Okay. For?
Next year.
Next year and the upcoming years then.
Right. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we will start then with our reports from the
Wait a minute. Under all conditions, Olivia is going to check and see if you could transfer the ownership of the van to the LLC. You anything on that?
Yeah. You?
He'll, he'll, he'll get, he'll cover that when he talks. When, when he talks, he'll cover that. Other than legal matters, I think is when you plan to discuss that.
Whenever I'm called, I'm, I don't know.
Okay, I think that's when he'll discuss that though. Okay. Now, the reports from the committees, events committee, Joyce?
Well, we're talking about
Boo Fest, okay.
Yeah, Boo Fest will be the twenty-fifth, uh, from four to seven, we'll have like we did last year, out of the bandstand, um, different bean dinners that are free. And kids games out here, and a movie and popcorn treats and a legion afterwards.
Oh, okay. Uh, movie and popcorn treats.
Is it the legion or the events committee for the town? It just felt like that.
It's the events committee, they hold the Boo Fest here. Then they'll move over to Legion, watch a movie, have some snacks.
But it's, it's the, it's the events committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing is, uh, come for tree, and last year, um, we spent like seventy-one dollars on cocoa and treats for kids. And I'd like to have that same amount, I hope we have, you go get the treats, I can give you as much cocoa, but fifty or sixty dollars should be enough.
Okay.
Well, if we're still wanting to have cocoa and
Yes, I think you should do that, okay. Okay. So, well, let's make it seventy-five.
Yeah.
And we don't spend it all. Now, do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve that seventy-five dollars for the tree.
Okay. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Harrison County Regional Sewer Board, anything to report, Bill?
No, we're moving right along on the new solitary, uh, new project. And, uh, uh, matter of fact, I think it's just about completed. And this is part of the national, I think we're having a fantastic job on it. So, uh, we're still, uh, in that, uh, part that's commercial. They've got two commercial buildings rented out. And, uh, one is for the Mexican restaurant. And, but that, that doesn't affect us really, that project doesn't, except you pass the Mexican restaurant, we may stop.
We may stop.
We may stop, yeah. So that's all I've got on that, any other fifteen? Uh, I contacted the county prosecutor, or something, on the new projects, there are three projects that we're, we're working on that are going to affect the county, and I contacted the, uh, prosecutor attorney for the legal aspect of that, and I think he has contacted Nathan to nominate him for one of these committees. Also talked to Kenny, apparently he's got an old number or something, but we'll go straight get out for the legal aspect of it, so we will represent it up there with the county prosecutor and the town marshal on these projects, any other fifteen that we're working on.
Okay.
Economic Development Committee, who's sort of been stagnant for the last couple of months. But we've got a meeting coming up next month, so if anybody's got anything that they want to put on the agenda, feel free. Uh, and also, we would like to see a lot of people here next month. It'll be the last meeting of the month, and we'll be talking about projects that we've got in store for next one of which will be in the overlook grid or a park. Another one is a LED sign out on the highway. Another is a, uh, turn in the dam, and, uh, that project's back active, uh, with, uh, what do you have?
When is that meeting?
Uh, the third month of the year.
Can I ask you a question on it?
Sure.
The bridge, last bridge to Gap, you raised twenty-four with what? I heard it was the overlook, and I heard it was a different park, what was that geared towards?
I think it, I haven't talked to her really about that, but I think that she put that back into the economic development committee of the town.
I don't
That's why she told me she was thinking about doing.
The projects, the way I understood it, Jay, was the projects, they really hadn't decided when we were going to have to add the dinner.
Right.
But there was this sketch of the, the park. Um, and I think that maybe they're leaning in that direction right now, but
I was the same question last week. Oh, you, you wasn't here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just a little confused, if we're talking about, if we're talking about a park on the corner, Spencer and Main Street, or are we talking about a park that is part of the overlook? That was a lot of questions.
Well, I think that
I, I think part of the overlook.
Okay.
I, I think there are a lot of questions about the, the the engineers that came out and looked and gave us, uh, they didn't give us a hard estimate or anything like that, they just sort of got the ideas. Uh, one of the engineers was only showing the overlook area and the park area that would be around the overlook. And I wouldn't call that a park, that would just be, uh, an area for citizens together, um, for a few parking spots. And then, um, uh, an egress to the overlook. Uh, and then the other engineer looked at that and the proposed park areas out towards Christian Church, on the town-owned property out there. And so they've not looked at the same thing.
Okay.
So it's going to be just about like starting over again as far as the engineers are concerned. On the same page, everybody, instead of just
One, one, one engineer perhaps, instead of two separate engineers looking at two separate projects, dialing in on one project.
Would you agree with that, Jay?
Have the engineer look at whatever you decide you want to go with, instead of splitting it up.
Yeah, and it, but it might have to be even in phases, you know, completed in phases, because we, we won't have the money to move forward that fast.
Well, it depends on North Oak Southern.
Yeah, if they, what they
They come here with the grant, which we hope they will, uh, then we can get into our project in one phase.
North Oak Southern has quite a bit of grant money to offer now. Not in this, I think we've missed this cycle, but, but we weren't ready in here. So, um, and then it, it just has to be, imagine this guy's just within thirty-five miles of where the railroad was. So that should be more than exciting to them if we could get in North Oak Southern, got it, out here, look at it. It's part of their history.
I don't think we should have a meeting of the committees, because like, out of the process of planning that North Oak Southern, I didn't know anything about that, so if we're hitting the same people
What, what were you getting, uh, what were you looking at, Greg, for North Oak Southern, Jay?
For the public sector, the agents that work.
And that falls, they have several different areas.
Yeah, I just don't want to hit this, you know what I mean?
I know what you're saying.
So, um
I know exactly what you're saying. Well, but, you know, that's just a all that is just out there, but you're right, it needs to be coordinated, you're completely right. It needs to be coordinated, and that's what didn't happen with the beginnings of the overlook.
And I'll just remind the Economic Development Committee of Baylor Park as well, because my MTD was born in power for Main Street. They used our yard up there for storage and all that. And for that, they ordered the conduit from the power pole over by the school all the way to the Baylor Park Shelter House.
Who did it?
MTV. So I had an open conduit from the nearest power pole all the way to the Baylor Park Shelter House. So
But you did approve it.
I, you did approve it.
Hold on.
Yeah.
They done it for first.
Yeah, they just go, there was no money involved, no, yeah.
So if we look at possible future power or maybe water out there to shelter house that already exists as well, just stop.
And that's a, to me, that's an ideal spot. Now, that's just my opinion, but it's, you know, there's so much already there. And, uh, this is what I presume, this needs a little bit of
January, jump in and teach me one other thing to put on that park. We're gonna, within the next year or so, we're gonna have to refresh the sign.
Oh.
We'll be failing.
Yes. Signs need to be kept up, or they look good. Good idea.
We've got a nine-nine year contract, okay.
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
Sorry you off track.
No, no, Jay, that's not off track at all, thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, absolutely.
We don't have yet, but we have the capability to put electricity there without breaking them on, without
Just it
We just need to coordinate the Duke. Get a little wire down through there.
Now, are you saying electric and water is possible, or one or the other?
No, water, water would have to be transferred.
But, but the electric is already to the
I mean, there's water there close, there's, there's two houses.
Right, right, okay.
And we've talked about that before because, you know, we'd even like to have restrooms up there, wouldn't we, Joyce, for the students that are right there?
I mean, I, I think in the future, we could use that way more often than we do, realistically, whether we use a priest.
Yes.
And then you might maintain all your driven.
Yes. And it could be
Or one, two hours again.
And it could
You know, maybe, put it out for birthday parties, put it out for little things, or so a lot of
Yes.
You know, you just, you get a key, you drive it off. Something.
I think
We could, I mean, we were smaller right now.
I know. I think that's something that we should pursue, because I think that's a good place for events, don't you, Joyce? Okay.
You want to go ahead?
Okay, I got cemetery committee coming up, but I think we can discuss all of that.
Why don't you see what the cost, uh, just get it, yeah, just get an estimate on the cost to get the electric out there? Cause you know, I mean, it's there, all of it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just, just like lighting up the bridge.
Yes.
They gotta come down the hole.
Yeah.
And then they've got a free conduit, they want it, and then we can attach it to that on a hundred amp box, two hundred amp box, whatever.
Yes, okay. Do you do that, Jay? If, do I hear any objections?
Nope.
To that, I'm good. Um, now, we do have some cemetery stuff to discuss. From the cemetery committee. Do you?
Well, uh, I think, what's it, sorry, Jim Harper?
Mr. Harper, James.
James.
James, uh, has identified some other tombstones that need to be repaired. And, um, so Jamie and I, uh, discussed part of the, uh, possibility that we probably need to go look and verify the condition of these tombstones. So, we needed time and, uh, you'd be available to go, immediately available, and I'm available most any time that Steve can go too. And we can all look and see what the tombstones look like and how many there are, because it's going far. The cemetery said, well, we need ten thousand dollars to repair a tombstone, so we're going to post for the next two months or something.
And, and one thing that Bill and I want to do then, cause you're old, and we've been here for like a long time. Steve, your agent with this, she's not home, so there's nothing. So, some of these tombstones, we thought might have a descendant. Not a tombstone, but the person buried there, might have a descendant, uh, who would be interested in helping us repair those tombstones.
Since they're owned by people.
For their families. So, we're, we want to pursue that angle as well as just the town funds.
Then we don't know how much we need to make off of the investment section, we have to pay for this project.
Right. So
So we're looking for your approval to invest in that.
So we're going to look into only the ones that are falling, because previously, I think we just kind of just
We just
went off track a little bit.
Yeah.
Because we need to spend a million dollars up there.
Oh, yeah.
But I think we need to worry about just the ones that's, yes, uh, just the ones that's
Yes.
you know
Red and the fall
Red and the fall of reverse money.
Yes.
Yep.
And that's it.
And
And then move forward from there.
Or break the monument, or, you know, something of that nature.
I think we just need to look at the ones that's gonna fall.
Make that motion.
I'm making
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to look at, or look into any monuments that's possibly, uh
Already fallen over.
Well, yeah, of course, uh, what's that?
Hazards.
Yeah, hazardous, thank you, uh, that's hazardous, that's probably more
Excellent.
Yes. I'm just a public.
Okay.
I think that's the best, uh, yes.
I'll second that, okay.
But we also want to pursue descendants' participation.
Do we want to do that? Uh, okay.
Can we put that on the same motion?
Yes, and, and look into possibly finding any descendants associated with that tombstone.
Okay. All in favor of our motion? Oh, wait, we need a second.
I'm second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gotta keep you straight, guys. All right.
What would be a good time for us all to meet?
Oh, no.
You got a good time ahead?
We do.
No. No, I don't.
Well, we need to have him with us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he's not here tonight, so
What's the best day, is your better day for you?
Sunday.
Morning or afternoon?
Sunday afternoon.
It's, it's okay, me.
Okay, me?
See?
Okay.
Sunday afternoon's good.
Okay.
Next Sunday afternoon, two o'clock?
Two o'clock, great.
Next Sunday afternoon, so that will be the twenty-sixth? Wait.
Today is the fourteenth?
It would be, well, this coming Sunday would be the nineteenth, but next Sunday would be the twenty-sixth.
I'm okay with the nineteenth as well, if we
Okay, that's all right with me?
I'm okay with that, Harper.
We get Harper on nineteen, I'm good for that.
Two, one, I'm good. People contacting, you guys can contact Harper? Jay, that'd be a good idea, can you be available Sunday at two o'clock?
That's probably
Thank you.
That's, this Sunday.
Yes.
Well, they, what happened? Yeah.
I think we need to hear it from the cemetery.
Two o'clock cemetery.
You can use the quiet hole.
That works.
So we did.
Two o'clock quiet hole.
All right. Okay. Now then. I think um, we have not had an opportunity to look at the minutes, so I've not received another call from Mr. Maggie, who was on the board with us, Jerry Maggie was on the board with us, regarding the sale, the resale of cemetery plots. So we are going to have to take a look at that, just want everybody to know that that's, that is a ongoing conversation that we're having right now. And, uh, but I've got a little bit of information, pulled the minutes out just before we, uh, started, and, um, I'll spend some time looking at that, because we've got people that want to resell them. And that one that I talked with you about him, Mr. Willis, you thought the town had already bought that back from him? Yeah. I just come that out just before we begin. Are you coming up, Jim? Well, I'm talking about the lady in Texas. Oh, Land Homes, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, she still has her deeds. And she's wanting to resell to the lady, and he told her and ran. So we have to check and see if we have a deed to. You know, the deeds to the cemetery plots had a way of
duplicating.
Circulating, yes. And so, we need to, we'll need to check our old deeds and see. And all of this just came up.
We need, they need, you might want to check the, uh, recorder, the recorder that's right on the
Yeah, so it's gonna ask, where do you record these, these transfers?
Well, I
Yeah, did they do that in nineteen forty-five?
Yeah, if it was done properly. Now, this guy's date of death was, would that tell you?
Oh, nine?
Oh, nine.
That's sixteen years ago.
Six twenty of oh nine. So, anyhow, that's going to require some research and some time, and we'll have to
Well, it might be worth it in the future, then.
Oh, yes, and then we will make it
It'll end next, and everybody will know.
And get it in an audience if we have to, I don't, we have to do it in an audience, but whatever our attorney tells us, we have to do it, Ron, that's what we'll do, okay? All righty, okay. Anything else? I think that's got the committees covered.
I'm all out.
That's too long, okay. Maybe, what do you have for us?
Well, I was gonna bring up that we need our ductwork here in the town hall cleaned. Um, also our roof, um, it's so bad back there in the back that it's terrible, it's like leaking everywhere up there. Uh, Brenda's had him mop it up several times, and the door back there is like So, uh, I, I called about the ductwork today, seeing these steamers coming on So, uh, I, I called about the ductwork today, seeing these steamers coming on Wednesday, no, Thursday. Oh, what is today? Tuesday. I'm so confused. They're coming on Thursday, or then eight and twelve, give me an estimate. And then I called another place up in the park school, I don't remember the name, because I called like five people prior to that, and they don't do it anymore.
Oh.
So, she said she could come maybe tomorrow and give us an estimate, and then maybe at the next meeting happen. Okay, please, let's see if we can get that taken care of.
We definitely need to do that, look at anything about the roofs.
Didn't we have some repairs made, or wasn't there some, something to the roof years ago?
Oh, Jay, Jay did some.
No, I thought my brothers.
Yeah, there was, now, somebody laid the rubber and carved the top of this roof.
Right.
And then, and only that roof was leaking initially, I think the same company just put some like caulk or some sealant along the seams.
That was great.
However, however, that's, that's dried up. And then, two years ago, maybe, three and a half years ago, I got up there, and then the same thing was what they did, however, that's, that's not a part of it. It really needs some, you think, J. Chell or something.
Right.
Up over the top of it, just make sure it doesn't leak.
But...
I don't, I don't totally, probably hasn't worked, but it should.
But that, and it's still that, what you're talking about, Jay, that won't fix the leak on out the rest of the roof, will it?
It should.
Oh, it should?
Because, yes, because where this building connects to the new portion, that's where the gap is, so it's going down that gap, and then running.
Running that, that way.
Yeah, running out that way.
I'm not a builder, obviously, yeah, okay.
But that's, that's what's happening with that, that section over there.
How expensive is that rubber covering?
I don't know, that's not something...
Just that rubber, that rubber roofing on there.
Is it, is it roll roofing, like a hot mop, or like a three-foot section roll roofing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's not, somehow, they shield those joints.
Yeah, with a hot mop, yeah.
So, up here, that's the way it is, over there, it's just strictly cement.
Okay. So, where transitions is what you're saying, it's where it's leaking?
And it's running that way then, to that line?
Yeah, because I mean, it's, uh, pitch like that, so when it goes down, it's gonna run, probably run on top, but then it'll just wear it off, and, you know, on the underside.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So, it's a matter of selling up that transition.
Do, do you think we need to get, I mean, talk to roofers, or?
I think so.
We know, we know a person, yeah.
Sounds like... I think, uh, maybe get several.
Bits?
Yeah.
Besides?
Yeah.
Yes, to keep it, yeah. So, I think do, probably I'll get three?
How much so, now?
Three bits? Okay. And, uh... Okay, and you think, uh, Libby, that we can take those repairs for both, out river boats, I think?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Right.
Uh, the other thing I have is our adoption of the budget meeting will be October twenty-seventh at three. And I will have everything that we need for that meeting, uh, additional appropriations, um, our salary ordinance updated, all that, hey, you know, at that meeting. And the other thing with the cemetery plots about Len Holmes, we've already discussed that, so.
What?
They'll have to. Because I need to get back with her soon, I can. I think she's been waiting since July, so.
Okay, okay. All right.
And I'll go, I'll look into the synergy thing also, uh, and do the energy and figure that out. Also, I'm sorry, I've got, um, certificates of appointment for Bill Byrd, or, uh, Harrison County Regional Sewer Board, and I just need Jean's signature on the, so I can send them out during the year, uh, for the Harrison County Regional Sewer Board, and for the Indiana Fifteen Regional League.
Any objection to Bill being our appointee to those?
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you.
You can sign those.
Okay. And I signed these, Phil, your in life limit, or whatever that...
Well, I think those would be forty-eight years on Indiana Fifteen.
Indiana Fifteen?
Uh, how many have you, are four and seven years old?
I am.
Me.
Plus, plus, okay. Hey, how about eighty-seven, add forty years to that, no, seventy, no, seventy-eight.
Well, I've been trying, it's, it's been, uh, I've thought many, many times, uh, how many times I've voted on a million-dollar car, or, or a million-dollar car, or a short land, or...
Or our area.
For our, for water, you know, it's, it's, it's very rewarding.
Yes, it is. I've been to a few of those meetings, and it's very rewarding. Okay, Libby?
Thanks, Libby.
Thanks for your service. Now, make a message, okay, Jay?
Uh, on utility services, our plant, uh, average flow was eighteen thousand six hundred gallons per day, which is twelve percent of the design's capacity. Uh, all parameters are, are good to go. We did have, uh, one call out on the eighteenth of September, and it says here on their paper the generator did not automatically turn on, however, it did turn on, but shortly thereafter, it gave a low fluid alarm, so it automatically shut down. So, Mike actually responded up there, and then I just told him how to put it on the manual mode, and then I went up and reset the alarms. Since then, it, it starts every Monday morning at eight o'clock, runs for thirty minutes, it's, it's rather perfect ever since, but I don't know what happened.
Is that the, is that kind of plan?
Yeah, yeah, it's a big generator. And then, uh, and then Chandler and I had the, uh, the damage at forty-one percent, so when we got deal with last time, so our diesel fuel will be a little bit higher this round. And they also put, I think, eighty to a hundred gallons in, in the day tank, or two day tank on that generator, so it, it's gonna be good. If the diesel fuel was a little higher this round, that, that's why I get, so we need to make sure that that was backed up a little bit.
I was hoping to go on that, uh, percentage before we get it to very, very, uh, perfect provision.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, because honestly, forty-one percent's the lowest I've ever let it get, so I'm not sure.
I don't believe it, man.
Yeah, we, we were at one point, it, when we first started, we were taking five gallons of jugs every time we went out there to diesel, and then once you realize it's a hundred gallons, it's a lot of trips.
Was that beating it? Was that going to be either to get, then to get it started?
No, that, that was just, you know, when, when we go out there, like, we go out there and mow, and we go check the drying bins, and we just go do weekly generator checks just to make sure everything's good to go, you know? We were taking five gallons at a time, just dumping it in there, and then you realize that fifty to sixty-one percent is like ten gallons of fuel, or twenty gallons of fuel, it's just left beast, so every time, every time, every time. Now, when we have to air come out, we just drop the truck up there, redo it, and that impressed on them. Other than that, uh, my monthly reports attached behind the paper door, uh, I guess the only thing I have now is, since we voted on relinquishing these contracts for the mowing for next season, shall I start pursuing the part-time labor?
Yeah.
Well, I'll have to put it in the paper.
And it's...
Yeah, and that's, it'll be a fairly generic synopsis in the paper, and we have, uh, our college applications in here that can, if any labor can, can be done, so.
And the reason why we would start pursuing that now would be because that part-time person can be used in the winter, uh, for snow, we're gonna have, uh, you know, a guaranteed number of hours per week, aren't we?
But they can also...
But they...
Yeah, I mean, they can also lift cemetery, cut trees.
Uh, yes.
Uh, pull up some of those old, I don't even know what kind of plants are flying in the yard, but if a tree grows out of a wound, you know, they, they could, they'll, they'll see all the trees.
Yeah, we've talked about cleaning that, uh...
So, that, that person could...
I think there are gonna be numerous activities beyond mowing.
Yeah, probably, I mean, plowing, so, cemetery tracks, weeding.
Right.
You know, there's, there's, there's plenty of other activities that, that can be decided in the open, so. But I'll have to get something in the paper, and then see if we can get any, so then...
We'll interview. Okay, that sounds great. So, looking for a part-time person. We'll make some of these expensive contracts that we pay one of them people on. Uh, Jimmy? Is that all you have, Jay?
That's all, isn't it? I don't really have much, because that, my, I can't get a board, you know, uh, ordinance violation, um, may be some important stuff, maybe that. Feelings from September last year, down sixty gallons. What is that, what is your feeling? Down sixty gallons. Have you pursued any other reserve offices? Uh, I don't know, I have the list this week of the five, I'd like to interview, and then thank you for telling me, so I have that.
The board's gonna interview, what, what do we have?
One person, if we do...
One board person, oh, yeah.
If we have all three of you, that's, that's...
Yes, right.
That's gonna be my, 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 my. I like it all, fine.
Would you have anything that you wanted to particularly bring to our attention, Jimmy, on this ledger?
All the notes we can set out, just so the elders can find out. Tom was very quick with his words. Is there anything we can do on that corner of our Paul's and Terry's grounds, uh, edges? You can't see around that corner?
No, you can't, when you pull out, you can't, you really can't see, you can't...
I just got out of the room, got off of my car, uh, a couple of times, it's pretty, Terry's ground.
Well, it's on Hancock.
You talking about?
Yes, it's on Hancock, the blue house on Hancock, with the...
I care, Hancock and Cherry.
That last is, uh...
In front of the truck.
Yeah, that's old times, yeah, I mean, that house is for sale, I don't want it sold enough, but their hedges are, their hedges and their dog, I mean, they're, they're backed up off of there.
Right.
But I think we could, we may be contacted.
Isn't there something about extracting the view in an intersection?
In fact, off the, I mean, you gotta pull up there, there's no line there, so, it's kind of...
You what, Jimmy?
You have to pull, there's no line there, where you have to stop.
I know, you have...
You know, it'd be, it'd be hard, because it's all in the property.
Yeah, like, maybe they're very...
It's on the property.
But if they're pretty active, I think we'd probably miss...
I think so too, but who, who do you ask now?
The estate. I, I don't know if it's on the estate, or if it's...
I don't either.
I think everyone's gonna say it. Or I think somebody took over.
I mean, you have to pull half a way out in, well, maybe not half way, a third of the way out into Cherry Street to be able to see, there's a, coming off of Speaker of Cherry Street.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I think that's, brings out the, the owner, or the state, or somebody, it's just cold, it's low.
Is, is there?
Yeah.
Is there a sign about, there's a sign about the realtor?
Yeah.
But I don't know who has the estate.
I'm sure the realtor could, if you're in contact. The attorney sent letters to Main Street and John...
Who, for your health, has anything done that, but we kept her term?
There's a, what, a house, right?
Little house, it's all a man, man.
Oh, the whole house? No, that's, we don't have to be a, we don't have to do it, it's back there, you know?
And, uh, health department, the insurance can't, you know?
What's that, the old wave judge?
It's on Hancock.
Yeah, oh, that's on both of the two of three.
Two oh three Hancock.
They're all two, they're all two, two of each.
But it's for the...
Was that built? Boy, that's what can fall down. Last, I don't know that.
I would think that it would be, um... Right?
What's that?
Okay, this is a, over here. Um, might be something that we need to pursue at this address, because, now, we don't have a building inspector.
Right.
But the county doesn't have one either. So, um, but it is an unsafe building. You talk about unsafe buildings, one time?
It's heavily overrun, vacation.
And it's overrun.
And it has to be a building, our ordinances has to be a building inspector to do that.
This, we can't, this isn't the one we're just talking, this is separate from the one with the hedges, are you trying to, I guess, it's a separate one?
Separate, separate. Separate address, it is on Hancock, but it's a separate address. Okay. Well, we need to at least look into that and see if we can, if we have to change the ordinance, or what we might have to do. For the turn, yeah, yeah.
And do you own that property?
To Milton, not Milton, it's, we had to, spelled differently, yeah.
Have we reached out to them, just to see if they haven't said it for now?
Okay.
Okay.
I wonder if, should I lean on that property?
If not.
Is that the long...
It's in his mind, George, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay.
The only other thing I have is, yeah, getting senior houses along on five thirty, but the fire department, we're gonna do just a basic presentation over senior stands, our bridge alarm system that they have, and fire laws, and do some public safety.
And do you have to be a resident of the senior house in general?
I do, exactly.
Okay, so any senior citizen can come?
I'd be okay with that, I don't know, I'd do that, make a head, I don't know, I mean, we might need to do one that's separate, but that's not, we do that in. We may need to do one that's separate, but that's not, we do that in. You know, that's senior here.
So if I got turned away, what happened to me by something for legal, you know, um.
How about nothing?
Nothing. I just think it's a great program that you guys are gonna be doing and, you know. Wish you could kind of.
I just gotta ask you.
Five thirty, five thirty, yeah. Okay, anything else, Jimmy? All right, Brian, do you have anything to report back to us?
Um, the one other thing that I have is the the dam and liability with that.
Okay.
Um, this is, would this be now, I guess the time that.
Yes.
Okay, so make sure, um, so unfortunately, uh something like a dam is gonna be considered inherent in public, so Milltown's probably not gonna be able to fully shield itself from like liability relating to that um by using an LLC. Um, a court, if something did happen, would probably still hold the town responsible regardless of if they have ownership paperwork, transfer or anything like that, but um, uh the, you can still substantially reduce the amount of the exposure liability just by ins- basically ensuring and maintaining safety measures, um warning signs where necessary, fair gear is where it's needed, but um basically di- demonstrating a legitimate effort to make it as safe as possible, but outside of that, the uh if something did happen and you tried to say that, well, it's actually owned by this LLC, the court's probably not gonna accept that, so.
Don't be dumb.
Not at all.
The problem with ownership, which towns could show.
What's that?
Uh, we have the.
Yeah, we have the deed to the property, yeah. Could you uh summarize, would you uh summarize that and give us that in writing?
Yeah.
Your summary there, I I couldn't write that fast.
Okay.
Don't you think we needed in writing the, to put in the records? Yeah, okay, if you could do that, you or Olivia or Greg or somebody, or all three of you signed it, so it looks really legal. Really legal, okay. Okay, let's see here, okay. Um, so even uh town council, did someone want to remind the citizens that business permits, I need if maybe you put that on there, did you? Yeah, yeah, if you wanted to go with that, um, if somebody's selling anything down. Yes, if if you're running any sort of business, selling any kind of property uh routinely, if you're if you have a business, you need to have a business permit.
Now, are we having a certificate that we can give them?
We can make up one, uh our business permit, I think you do give them a receipt when they pay, don't you, Lydia? Yes.
But they don't have to post it anyway.
No, but and they're, they cost all of three dollars, but so, so I, should we change that? I suspect that we should. You know, one one time we had economic development, hello, David, how are you? Awesome, um, we had a list of businesses when we were going over some economic development, so there was a list of businesses in Milltown.
Uh-huh.
I thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we requested it at one point on our website first thing along the line.
Yeah.
One of those helping doctors over twenty years ago, he went around and it was.
No, this was provided time, someone. What'd you say?
We probably haven't seen it at least, but currently.
Yeah.
We hit that website, that's one of the things that we were trying to put on there.
I mean, yes, the one it was.
Oh.
Was for the website.
Yeah, there's several.
A lot. Okay, all right. This is for man's cost, all of three dollars for the time being, that. Okay. Okay, uh any other comments from the town council on anything?
Maybe.
So uh the citizen request, Jay, I don't know if she, over there, it's on that sheet.
That's down, citizen's comments, I have Ms. Martha Hickerson.
Ms. Martha, you're first.
Yeah, I had two, do I get five minutes for one, five minutes for the other, or total five minutes?
I'll put you on the timer for.
The first one is for the, first one's for the uh road up there, Short Street, where it goes by the Sunny Claws and from the police station, well, from Hancock down to our property. There there's a ditch, it's fifteen inches deep, and I guess garbage truck comes and there's, I don't who did it, but anyway, over time, it's washed out. And the uh other day, there was a little boy on a bicycle, he's new in town, he's ten, there's a and he ran off the road into that ditch and he skidded himself up pretty bad, his face and his arm. He thought he broke his arm, if that knows it wasn't broke, then his face, his arm, his whole side of it hit his street. And it does need to be cleared, and that's something, Jay, I guess the town would do.
Which property is it?
It's on the Sunny Claws, the side of that, uh Short Street, but I don't know who's property that is.
Yeah, we we.
So it's on Short.
It's, yeah, um, it's Short Street, so narrow, if if it's a trash truck, if it's.
Yeah.
It's probably gonna continue to happen, but we could definitely dump some dirt in there if we wanted to.
The last year, or two years ago, I guess it was, they tore our property up pretty good, and I got after them and they come back and they resided it and then they planted grass seeds and it's reset now.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, the trash company did.
Probably didn't start it back, I'm sure, that's what.
Well, that's when it began to hurt, but this time, it's an actual ditch, but it's not on us, it's on the town, on the Sunny Claws, there's no. That's first thing.
All right, and we started again, hold on, we'll start it again. You asked me so, you actually reminded me that that's what we do, go ahead.
Okay, the second one is, where our property, Grand Robert Inn, called it, that's been six seventy-nine. And we have plenty of animals, and we've always gotten a sewer exemption because of the animals, he doesn't go to the sewer system. We've got water, but it doesn't have to be sewer, we've always had an exemption for it. And somehow or the other, the exemption has been taken off. Now, I've always paid the bill, paid it full time, and I never paid attention to it while I was working, I just paid. Well, lately, the kids are paying it since they got, you know, they're with me, and it's gotten absorbed, it weighs two hundred forty-two bucks a month. And I I called Lisa, the Lisa clerk, and she remembered that I did have an exemption on it, you know, for the animals, and I was supposed to get a renewed sewer cost, and but she didn't know, she doesn't have it now, she didn't know when it was taken off, what had been done. I said, but somehow, but I, she sent the town clerk, this is what does happen. They put them on for people, well, like Jim said, for swimming pool, they put them on, they take them off if somebody doesn't have them. But anyway, Lydia was trying to look it up to see when it was taken off.
Right.
And she called me, I sacked her in the end, and told me that she can't find that, does that mean that she has to go back through all the records? And we had it when Linda Pepper was here, we had it when Susan was here, I think we had it when Shelby was here. And then since Shelby, we've had Donna, Alicia, and now Lydia.
And Debbie, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so there've been several courts, one of them had to take the exemption off.
What does it mean, if I never gave you one?
Well, I know, I don't know, I just told you, we've always had it because we've drank off again. A lot of people down here have them, that ours has been taken off, and I need to find out when it was taken off. Who did it, and I'd like to be reimbursed for the time that has not, that I've been paying for, that I didn't even paying for.
I think she might need to go to the water companies for me, and speaker Lisa.
I asked Lisa if I needed to go to the water board, and she said they wouldn't know that it comes from.
And they're the ones that keep track of all that, though.
Yeah, we we pay them to do our billing for our region, they should have records of that doing.
Let's see, our bill fluctuates.
They pay them to do our billing.
Our bill, our bill fluctuates quite a bit because in the spring, water table managing, we have all the kids four A channels. And you're talking about.
That's a lot of water.
A lot of water, when you're watering two pigs and chickens and ducks and everything that the kids shove, you know. It can get pretty expensive, I know, for what, but I I'm worried about the sewer.
Yeah, I'll take a little bit of Martha's comment if I may, for instance, we have that new business, the greenhouse, Harris Greenhouse there, so that's that's a family of two who before having their greenhouse had a pretty steady bill. So we were able to say, you know, all the water they use for the greenhouse, anything over this certain amount, they got, they cranked for or exemption of. So, you know, how how do you figure that for a family of four, or a family of five, or, you know, how much do you use for your animals, or how much do they really use on their greenhouse, that'd be a tough one to, that'd be a good hard figure to come up with. But I mean, it obviously would be dumb, but.
Okay, if I know the two to the water board, or Lisa think, Lisa said she didn't know, she couldn't do that, she said the town clerk had to. I don't know if you need to go back through the records or do that, but if we find out when it was taken off, can I get a back adjustment for that time?
Well, once again, I think it's gonna be super hard to figure out what is that adjustment, if there is, what that adjustment should be. If you have going from one person to five people in your household, like you said.
We've always had four people, there, at least now we've got six, okay, then you said, but like I said, four months out of the year, it's really high because we have all the four A channels, you know, that we have, that's water table managing. But if we find out when it was taken off and who did it, from there, it would be easier to figure out. Would you all approve it, to get a back adjustment for it?
That's hard to say, Martha, at this point, I think, I think it's very hard to say because of the number fluctuations that we have in the family, and we don't know or sure when it was taken off now, but Lisa should be able to tell, that he's right there, we pay them to do our billing. We pay them to do our billing, she knows how much you use, and she knows, she knows her average, I do not know that because she takes care of that. I just sign off whenever she tells me.
Yeah, I talked to Lisa, and I think Lydia talked to Lisa, oh.
I did.
Now, did Lisa take it, I asked Lisa, I said, I should go to the water board, she said, no, I should go to Lynn, so I went to Lynn.
Yeah.
Well, we think you should go to the water board.
I I.
We think you should go to the water board.
I honestly do, because she does our billing, she knows how much you use, how much you average, and she can look back and see how much and when maybe it started fluctuating. I don't have access to her computer, I don't know that.
All right, um then I'm gonna go to Lisa, and I'll have her print it out. Since X is nine, so about ten years, so she could go about ten years and find out.
She should be able to.
What the average was, you know, how it fluctuates, because it does fluctuate, I mean, eight months out, in the summer, it's gonna be higher, when we have four A, it's gonna be half, it's four months. And then there's a short time in the winter there where it's gonna be pretty stable. I can get the records and bring it.
Yeah, she's the one that has all the information.
Uh they uh they wouldn't wait that.
They wouldn't, no, they probably wouldn't, okay. Talking about the water board, they don't wait on that, yeah, all right, thanks Martha. So just let us know what Lisa says about, you know, because she builds for us.
What is my, you know, when they took over our building?
I can't remember.
I'm sorry, you know, when the water took over our building?
Ever since they've been Blue River Regional Water.
I thought.
The next board meeting's October twentieth.
I thought that the town used to build their own water.
I don't know, um, you know, one person might have asked.
Yeah, that'd be right around the pound, the pound, so the water, how many of the riots, the water.
And when was that? Anybody know, that goes way back.
Yeah?
When we turned it over to Blue River, two thousand one, when they shared our uh.
Two thousand one.
You know, when he served there.
Two thousand one?
Yeah, he was.
Twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five years ago.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We can go back to city.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know it's at the bank. Same time, man, next step, uh, cut the noise, cut the noise.
Okay, who else is on the list?
Only one more. Let's see, I have one last.
All right, who's the next?
Yeah, I'm guarding the town harassing me, I clean my shed, I made this couple in the driveway, cleaned it up the next day. A day and a half later, I get a thing about a three hundred dollar violation, the same time I was with the dog, lives up on Prince Town Road. And I showed you pictures of it that night.
Sure, now, I will say this, uh, from your comment there, if he give you a violation, I'm sure it was already in the works, not just on a day and a half prior, I'm sure it was in the works for weeks or whatever.
Well, what is the limit?
I I'm saying, I don't know, he.
We got.
Sure, absolutely.
How long did he think he said, right, before your complaint?
It's not me complaining, I get complaints and I respond to them, that's it.
That's what you. The thing of it is, and I've been harassed, just like when you guys came over there on the the twelfth of May, right?
The twelfth of May.
When you come over, day one, same place I got the ticket, the very next day, somebody from the board, like Harris County complaining about my place on Prince Town Road.
I'm not telling you.
And the thing of it is, in fact, it's not harassment. There was a problem, there was somebody, and it said a member of the town board down there, Coach Chris, TJ told me. But anyway, my property is cleaned up, so why am I getting harassed by you? I waited after the driveway, you go for it, so I can go for it, and you said, they're telling me I can't do that.
No, Sam, what I.
Well, then why am I, I got three hundred dollar ticket?
When I sent you the notice, it was not like that, and if you.
When you sent me the notice?
In the mail.
You didn't send me, no notice in there, that's what you have violation.
That's what it is, and if you'd have listened to me, when I tried to talk to you on Tuesday, when I left and I said, hey, Sam, and you got your truck and drove off, we're.
I didn't even hear you.
Well, I tried to.
You don't know where I live, you know my truck.
You're right, and you have my number, what is that?
I don't have your number, I didn't even have a phone.
What is that citation, it's got my phone number on it, if you just, if you want me to clean it up.
It's cleaned up.
Okay, then you have the right to bill it, it tells you on there, you have the right to bill it, that's all you had to do.
I showed you, and pictures of my truck parked in the damn driveway.
Okay, I didn't go back home, I didn't have a case.
I know you've been to Florida, I see pictures.
What, where?
Well, it was in Florida.
I won't stop you on it, but.
What's it? And give me, uh, in the water with the kids. Oh, my.
What does that have to do with anything?
Oh, he said he was on vacation. I was, well, I explained. I know he was on vacation.
Okay, you don't need to take it as if part of the, if you go on vacation, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that, and that's on there. But when I retired, Sam, and I took the picture, it wasn't clean. And you know it wasn't clean.
I know it wasn't.
But when you clean it.
Too clean. Then I'd be cleaning my dear chair out.
Right, and that's why it tells you on that citation.
So, that's what I'm saying. How long can I keep my stuff when I'm going through it before you're gonna set that right in the goddamn test? That's what I'm trying to tell you.
The notice is not.
I remind you, you don't find an inch of my question.
We have a question.
You're avoiding the question.
I am.
How long?
Sam.
Five days. Teenager twenty.
If you stand here and listen to me, you'll take the answer.
So basically, I write the citation. If he didn't agree with what she did, okay. He appeals it. All he has to do is tell Libby or any board member that he wants to appeal it, and that's the next meeting. So he has until the complete next meeting. If he just come in here and says, hey, I cleaned it up. I went on vacation. I didn't go over and see if he cleaned it up.
It's not your job, I don't think, to have to go back and say it's cleaned up.
I typically thought it was.
If you once makes the appeal, you makes the appeal.
I, and, you know, I haven't been over there. I, I don't think I ever. The, the dog thing, the dog was, his dog, that's.
And I had to stop in the, on the street one day because his little black dog, the little black dog?
Black and tan.
Black and tan was in the street. So, if he lives someplace else, he visits there a lot.
And the old black dog of all the ordinances is not the one. That's why I send the notices. That's why I, you know, give all this opportunity, you know. Take that phone call. If me now, I'll come out and clean it up. We've done it before. You know, I offered Broadway Street. I'd offer that, but. I think you're gonna find out.
Thank you. Well, um, Mr. Manis passed clean. His driveway's number one. I, I know he's concerned about my going past his house, but I live right there, so.
It is a common affair. Anybody can.
I do. Well, I mean, I have to use that street. And, um, but he did move things back so that you can park in the driveway. But the last several days, there's, since he's had it cleaned, he's parking on the street instead of pulling. I think he said he took a picture and it's sent to you if the truck parked in there.
No, he came to my house.
Oh, he came to your, oh, he came to your house.
And showed him the picture.
Yeah.
You know, and the, the on-street parking thing, we don't have a sign there. We don't have a sign ordinance. You know, uh, how you guys wanna have an I can for it, because it's, there's no ordinance, there's no sign, so. You know.
Exactly.
Alright.
Then it'll come back on the town.
Well, it'll come back on Thursday.
Well. Oh, for a while. Probably for a minute, it'd be followed by us.
Well, I don't see, I don't think back on the town.
Of course.
I mean, that's, that's them break, you know, that's their. So, I'd see it was the truck.
And like I said, the ordinances, if you get a notice about following, we, you know, we figured it out. We're against that, obviously. I, it is not my choice. I, one has to enforce the down ordinance.
You're doing your job.
Choice.
Yes. And none of us want it. And as you said, Jimmy, to come to that, we want to serve the citizens. That's why we're here. And what, what people do impacts others. And that's what we want to do, is just serve the citizens up to, up to the table, not just. Up you and then let something else.
So, on his, while we're here, already, are we considering that appeal or are we?
Does he not have to formally write kind of appeal?
We don't have any requirements under that. I mean, we've always had, cause he knows. I don't know.
We don't have a formal way of making appeal. I, I would say that's unappealed.
I thought it said on the citation. I don't want to get given either to the council or the clerk forever. It used to say that. I probably took that out. I'm not, I'm not sure. Enough for two, I'm wishing that you go upon it.
Sam's concern was, he got the citation from you for three hundred dollars after it was cleaned up. But then he got, you know, and he got to his letter, or he got to whatever in the mail, and it referred to his dog. But his dog lives up on Prince Town Road.
I like that.
Mary, uh, Martha.
It, it goes back to the.
It was a little, yeah.
Yeah. Now, anyway, he got it after the place was cleaned up, and that's what it's gonna be.
Well, that's not the truth, because it takes a process of getting the, his, you know, started and getting it in the mail and, and the manager receiving it. So, just in that meantime, he possibly got it cleaned up. But, but when it started, it was not clean. So.
It was not.
You know, and I sent his notice on ten one.
And my list is practically cleaned up. I haven't been up there.
I went on vacation Tuesday last week, so.
I don't know. I didn't go by every day, so I didn't get it tied up.
And you were.
If you sent it on ten one, you received a complaint. Some type, yeah, way before that.
Ten twenty-four, or, I mean, nine twenty-four, I mean, something week prior.
Yeah, but the point is, all he had to do was come in and appeal and say, hey, I got the citation. I went ahead and cleaned it up. I took care of it. I'd like not to pay the fine.
Easy.
Easy.
It would have been done.
Did you get the citation there, Kimmy, or October first?
Yeah, it doesn't have it.
I don't know. The ordinance did.
Well, that's what's all pretty important, Jimmy, is October the first.
Yeah, it was supposed to be October the first.
So I guess the claim on board is.
Yeah, did you guys think that's an appeal?
And he's cleaned it up and it's good to go, and he doesn't receive the fine or does anything to it.
You gotta.
This is a sign of fact.
I, I send no ordinances. I don't prescribe it.
Well, I'm gonna say what, what it's gonna be an appeal. Now, is the place cleaned? I can't say that. Did we visually go inspected?
What you can see from the road.
Pardon?
What you can see from the road. I, I have a better person over there.
Do you any patches every day? Do you consider it cleaned?
I post it every day.
But do you consider it cleaned up now? Or not cleaned up?
And you can't see the driveway now.
If the car's there or not?
It's moved to the sides of the driveway. And you can now, the driveway was completely blocked again since it had been cleaned up.
Well, I don't know. I never know that. That's all I know.
We had, we had cleaned it up and you paid everything he was supposed to, and then the driveway was getting full again. And now, since he cleaned it up, you can see the driveway. It's like the C parted right there, and you can see the driveway. But he wasn't parking in the, he may have parked, took a picture in the driveway, but he was still parking on the street.
Well, I think that's a.
And I guess that's a problem that we need to address to get that part fixed, that street parking. That's my observation, and it's not harassment. It's just observation.
Well, he just considered it harassment because he got the citation.
I know what he thinks.
After he cleaned it up.
But.
But once it goes in the mail, I can't.
It was in the interim.
What'd you say, Jimmy?
Once it goes in the mail, I can't go say it loud.
Well, I know that. But does he, does he, uh, what, my question is, does he owe you three hundred dollars now? Or if that's considered an appeal, you don't consider it as an appeal?
Well. That's the board's decision. That's, I don't know.
Well, that's what I understand.
Okay, so here's my opinion. From when he got the citation, he did show me pictures. It was cleaned up. Today, I don't know. So I, all I can say is he did clean it up. I do believe, but from that point on, I don't know. I've been there.
And I eventually drove past, and the C had parted. You, you could see the driveway. Most of it was moved to the side, so is that his appeal?
You'll probably get another chance to do whatever you need to do.
I, I would just consider it a pill and.
I, I would too.
Till next month, and if it's not, if it's the same.
I think it's standard plan.
I, I would do, I would consider it an appeal. He came, he does need to just talk reasonably without profanity.
I can't make you do that.
Well, he.
I don't think you can do that.
Well, you know, so.
So Ron Poppen was in the next week. He's got a uncle in the hospital in VA. He's very bad off. And his younger brother had a nasty heart attack this morning. So, try not to say anything to him within the next week because he is very upset. That's not saying he's not every time he comes home.
Right.
But he does have.
We still, unfortunately, we still got a double, and we can't skip, go around everybody's.
I know that, that, what I'm saying.
I, I get what you're saying. I'm just telling you, you know, our point.
Is that an appeal, when do you think the board will make a decision whether he owes you three hundred dollars or not?
So, uh.
Next week, Jimmy's saying next week.
Next week.
The reason I ask.
Okay.
The reason I ask that is because my granddaughter lives right down the street from this other place. And he's up there quite a bit, so I, and I do have fun with the interaction with him, with her. And they're gonna make a decision next week whether he has to.
Next week.
Next week.
Next week, whether he has to pay the three hundred dollars or not. Okay.
Yeah, at this point, I would think they're like, now they go over there, out to the, on the water.
The C's been started.
And that's what we've, we've done it fast. We said on every.
So, anything else to be brought before the board? Who's else not prepared?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Alright, that's. Seven twenty-three.
Mercury.
Okay.
No, the town.
On the thirty-seven, twenty, May, and second, Adam and Steve and all.
Adderall, pulling G.
What'd you name?
I named that.
So, yes, I need to do.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's very.
What we're asking for over there is just so can we, actions because the air will come over here. We're trying to.
Okay, but it's good to see.
The week before.